Um, our chairperson is going to be a few minutes late to the meeting and so as the vice chair, she has asked me to start the meeting just so we can stay on track because we have a heavy agenda tonight. So our first order of business will be to do the pledge of allegiance if you could meet yourself. And I will say the pledge, stand if you choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, you froze for me, so I'm not sure if you were asking us a question.
Yeah, after you said superintendent's goals, I didn't hear anything else.
Okay, sorry. I was just asking if anybody had any comments or if there's any discussion on the consent agenda. And I'm getting a notice that my connection is unstable, so I apologize. I've closed as many programs as I can. I might have to rejoin from my phone if this continues to be a problem, or I'll ask Joe to take over. So I'm seeing none. Are we ready to take a vote? Okay, um, since this is Zoom, we'll do a roll call and I will start with, um, Robin.
Hey, I'm new, so do I just say that I approve?
You just say yes or no. Yes would be a vote to approve the consent agenda. Okay.
Yes.
Um, Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Uh, Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Jackie Reinert?
Yes.
We have another new member tonight who I should have introduced to everybody and said, welcome to John McFarland.
Hello, yes.
Okay, and myself, yes. Thank you, guys. Um, that was, um, I think in my haste to try to move things along, I forgot to take a moment to pause and introduce John. So John is the newest member of the school committee representing Stowe. And, um, John, would you like to take an opportunity, this opportunity to introduce yourself? And, um, just say a few words about why you, um, stepped up into this role?
Hello, sure. My name is John McFarland. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, I've lived in Stowe with my wife and two kids since around twenty seventeen. And we have a small little horse farm here in Stowe. And, um, uh, I've been looking forward to just serving the community somehow. And, uh, I love the school here. And when I heard the, it was a seat vacancy, I thought maybe it was my chance to step up and see if I could offer something to the town. So excited that I was able to step into the vacancy. And hopefully I'll be able to add something to the, to the team here. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
We are so grateful that you have stepped up and are willing to put in, you know, your time to this important role. I know Leah will have her own words of thanks to give to you, um, but welcome.
Thank you.
And, um, we've already gotten through one of the heavy agenda items, so. Uh, let's move on. The next thing is the chair, school committee chairperson update. I'm going to defer this until Leah joins the meeting. And that brings us to our student representative report. I see Ava Wyman is on the call. And, um, so I'm hoping that she is, has a report for us. Hi, Ava.
Hi, um, Ryan couldn't be here because he had soccer, so. But starting off with athletics, the home, the homecoming football game is this Friday, and it's also middle school band night. Field hockey has their C Mass playoff game on Saturday. Um, I was actually just at the semifinals. They lost to Algonquin two to one, but that's okay. And then the golf team is number two in the state. They had their state championship in some far, far west. It's meeting on Friday to plan other community building events. The innovations pathway and Decafield trip, from what I've heard from Mr. A in August. Can you guys hear me?
I'm having internet problems. I don't know if it's my end or on Ava's end, but I have not been able to understand most of what Ava said.
I have single connection.
Yeah.
Perhaps if you turn off your video and just do audio, it might work better.
Okay, wait, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you guys know where I left off?
Maybe you could start over.
The golf, the golf team, second place.
Hold on, let me, maybe I can move and see.
I think we can hear you now pretty well. Yeah.
Okay, so the golf team is number two in the state. They had their championship in, out west. And then the student leadership group is meeting on Friday to plan community building events for this fall and generate ideas for the spring. Um, the innovation pathway and Decafield trip was to Bentley on Tuesday. And Mr. A and all the students that went said that it went really well and they had a really great time. The E M T informational meeting for interested cadets and families was on the twenty second. And applications are due at the end of October, so that's available for sophomores and juniors. And then whole school events, we had spirit week this week. Today was USA Day. It's the final week of the scheduled pilot, so we're going to send out a survey. Oops, sorry. We're going to send out a survey at the end of the week to see how students felt about it. So far, all the students have said that they really like the pilot schedule. Personally, I don't, but I won't even be here for it, so. And then the homecoming dance is on Saturday. Um, senior class photo was on the turf today and senior sunrise is on Friday. And that's all I have.
Um, hi, guys. I, I don't hear anything on my end, but I do connect, continue to get messages that my internet connection is unstable.
Yeah, I think she's done.
Okay, thank you so much, Ava. It's from what I-
I'm sorry, guys. I'm in the car, so that's probably why.
That's okay. It sounds like there is a lot going on at the high school right now. And, um, it's an exciting time for sports and, and spirit. And, um, it's really exciting to hear that the middle school band is going to be joining the high school band at the homecoming game. What a great opportunity for all of our students to come together and have some school spirit.
Yeah.
So does anybody on the committee have questions for Ava? Do not see any hands, so thank you so much for your time. It's, um, it sounds like you have a busy night too, Ava.
Yeah, I have practice, but-
Okay, we'll let you get on with your night. Thank you so much for your-
Have a great night, everybody. Sorry.
No problem at all. Bye, Ava. All right, chugging along here onto the superintendent's report, so I will pass this off to, uh, Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your recognition and, uh, good evening to everyone on the committee. It's great to see you all. And John, welcome to your first meeting. So, uh, that all being said, um, I have a few things to update the committee on today. Uh, last Friday, I sent out a notice to our community, uh, regarding absenteeism, uh, and attendance at our schools. And, um, as we look at absenteeism as, as being really sort of the, the most critical place to, to, for, for students to learn in our schools is to be in the seats. And so we were working hard to make sure we're bringing, uh, students into, uh, the, the schools every day. I want the committee to know that our attendance rate right now, and I checked it today, is ninety-six percent for this time up to this point in the year, which is good. It meets all the metrics that we want to hit. Chronic absenteeism is the mark, um, in which if you have missed ten percent or greater of the days, uh, you would be, um, identified as chronically absent. And at this point in the year, we're just under forty days of school. So if you have four absences, you would be in that chronic absenteeism category. But I put this notice out there because I did notice an uptick in our cro- uh, chronic absenteeism over last year. We did have some, uh, some viruses, uh, in September, uh, that did come through the school, which I think had an impact along with, uh, some religious holidays that occurred in the month of September. So this is the time year where that number begins to flatten out and actually even decrease if it follows the pattern of previous years as well. But it is something we're monitoring and it's an important part of the school accountability data systems. Uh, so, um, just wanted to update the committee on what we're doing there. And you can see what those rates, uh, approximate rates are in the schools. They change, of course, daily because you have a new, uh, divisor each day of school relative to those absences. Uh, combined with the report, we'll move on to number two with enrollment. And, uh, Ms. Masterson, if you can bring up the enrollment document, um, that's on the other doc that I sent just before the meeting here. This is where you're going to see the, um, school attendance, uh, sorry, school enrollment for October first. And again, I'll share with the committee that, um, uh, when I sent the doc, I sent the June first doc to the committee in error and posted that. So I'm sent, I'm correcting that now and we'll get this document uploaded into the meeting materials. But what you'll notice when you look at, at this document, these are the numbers that are reported, the state of Massachusetts for enrollment. And if you go to the bottom right-hand corner, uh, you can see that the far right number of three thousand forty-six is the number of students that were in session as of June first of last year. Three thousand thirty-one was last year's October one number. So you can see that we grew by fifteen students during the school year. And this year, we're starting out with two thousand nine hundred eighty-seven students in grades pre-K through, uh, thirteen plus, age twenty-two. So, um, you can see, uh, the class sizes throughout this document. We're maintaining our class sizes of, uh, twenty-four students. I will say, if you go down to, uh, Mary Rollinson Elementary, uh, we held a position in abeyance last year, uh, in the event that we got a run on enrollment. And certainly we did experience some increase in enrollment. And so we have hired a fourth, fifth grade teacher, and I reviewed this with the committee last month, um, to support, and that teacher has started at, uh, Mary Rollinson. So there is an additional teacher in the fourth and fifth grade that is supporting those students in literacy and mathematics and is participating as a full member of those teams. So that gives you a basic sense of where we are with relative attendance. What I will say, based on our forecasting tools that I have, we look to, to be that we're going to level off next year. Uh, we anticipated that we would have a decline in enrollment this year. And indeed, that was realized to the number that, uh, we were projecting. Uh, we were projecting somewhere around a decrease of around, uh, approximately thirty students. And we realized a little bit more than that decrease. Uh, but next year, it looks as if we will be leveling off due to the, the population trends that we see and what our historical changes are. Uh, those historical changes can be a little bit tricky because our five-year rolling average, this is the last year that the return from COVID will be in that data set. Um, and so I, I suspect that, that projection is even going to become stronger. As you know, when students returned from hybrid remote learning, many who were on homeschool plans came back into the system. But I digress a little bit, um, but that is the updated enrollment. Ms. Masterson, if you can go ahead and go to the school choice page of your superintendent's report. Uh, I was asked by the committee to give you an update on where we are with school choice enrollment, uh, relative to general enrollment at this time of year. And there are two tables that are in the superintendent's report. The first table is overall enrollment of school choice. And you can see, we have, uh, forty students, uh, that are Nishoba, uh, students, as much as every resident is in our school system. And, uh, you can see the application of the strategy we've employed with school choice over the last couple of years has put, uh, a fairly leveled distribution of students across the grade levels in the system. You'll notice that Center School and Mary Rollinson are not on this chart. And that's because, uh, using the criteria that's been presented the last two years, uh, they did not have any school choice seats that were open or available. And then the second table that you're going to see here, I've added, this is relative specifically to last year's enrollment. And the table outlines the grade levels that we opened, the locations, and how they actualized. So the columns in white are the number of seats that were available. The columns in green are the seats that have been occupied, uh, that were made available. So we made forty seats available through school choice at various grade levels and locations last year. Nineteen of those seats actualized in enrollments at the beginning of this year. And so it's with that, Madam Chair, that I'll wrap up and take, uh, any questions from the committee regarding the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you, Kirk. Um, Alita, Leah is in the waiting room. Just wanted to let you know that. Do you see her there? Okay, great. So I will just Leah, fill Leah in. Hi, Leah.
Hi, guys.
I'm glad you're here because I'm having internet stability problems.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we just wrapped up the superintendent report and I was just about to open the floor to questions. Um, and so we can do that, but I have questions, but I want to allow other people to ask them first.
All right, so you want me to take the reins there, Amy?
Handing it over to you.
All right, thanks. Thanks so much for standing in.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, any questions on the superintendent report? Looks like you're up, Amy.
All right. Um, so I have a question, two questions. One is on the absenteeism, um, data that was presented and the other one is on, uh, data that was presented. So the first one, these, these, um, absent, chronic absenteeism rates. Um, I think I heard you say that they include any kind of absence. So like a, an excused absence for a religious holiday would be counted in these numbers?
It, it simply records days you're in, not in the seat.
So it doesn't matter for what the reason is?
It's not. You're either in school or you're not in school. So if there isn't a, a metric for what is excused or not excused, um, in that, um, idea, in that, uh, you know, thing. So, uh, these are those, just the actual percentages.
Okay, all right, I didn't understand that before.
Yeah.
Um, the second question I had was regarding the school choice, um, data. And it looks, I was wondering if you have any insight as to the reason why there were no spots filled for the eleventh grade. The five seats that were opened up in to the, for, for eleventh grade. Like, does that mean that nobody applied?
That means- That's exactly right. Nobody applied. We were able to take, we did have, uh, a lottery scenario. And it turns out that one of the folks, uh, at the grade level where we did have a lottery scenario, one of the people that were selected didn't leave. So the person who, uh, was not selected actually was then offered that seat. So, uh, we were able to bring in, uh, the, all those who applied.
Okay, and are, are we able, Leah, to ask about the lottery process through this update? You know, um-
Yeah, so I think that the original intent of this was to not only get an enrollment update, but also to understand how the school choice process is going. So not only to understand, you know, whether or not it's working, but if there's anything that we need to know about the process as we move forward for the following year. So go ahead and ask whatever process question you'd like.
Well, I guess my process question is related to, um, an experience of someone I know who tried to participate in this process. And it seemed like it was different than, um, um, other lottery processes that I have personally experienced where a lottery is held kind of like in real time. And, um, the, I, I don't know if it's like live streaming is the right way, but how does somebody who's, who's applied for a lottery position know what the results are? I guess it's really what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, we pop, we publish the lottery every, every year. And we tell people that the, the date, the time and the location, we do that in the conference room, Town Hall, uh, excuse me, Town Hall of the central office. Um, and, uh, we did not have anybody arrive to participate with that. So, uh, we had, uh, Ms. Hannigan, I believe, Ms. Masterson. Ms. Hannigan came up as our witness this year, um, for, uh, the lottery process. But like I said, once we did the lottery process, the seat of, of the person that didn't, uh, wasn't accepted in that lottery, uh, was ultimately brought in. We only had one grade level where we had to do a lottery.
All right, any other questions, Amy?
Not, not now, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the committee on the superintendent's report? I am not seeing any, so I don't think, anyway. So we're gonna, um, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I just realized that Kirk may not have been, I, I don't know if you finished the report, Kirk.
Uh, uh, that, that did conclude the report, but what I will say, thank you, Ms. Cohen.
You're welcome.
Is that in the updates on strategic work, we have two presentations tonight, the MCAS presentation and the youth risk behavior summary. And so with those items in new businesses, uh, today, or excuse me, um, next up in the strategic work, uh, Madam Chair, I would just hand it to you, uh, at this point.
Okay. Um, sorry, I'm just scrolling. Bear with me for one moment. All right, so, yeah, um, so I'm seeing Kirk that the next item on the agenda is that the, we are going to move now to the twenty twenty-four MCAS presentation. Is that right?
Great. And so let me introduce, uh, Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend. Uh, she is going to present to you, uh, uh, an overview of the MCAS results for the school district. So, Ms. Friend, take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. And thank you, Chair Viverito. I'm going to ask Alita to do her thing and share the slides. So thank you. Um, it, it's an honor and a privilege to share our MCAS results with the committee and with the community. Um, as, as I have spoken before, MCAS is an important data point. It provides us with information on the student level and the curriculum level to improve. And for us at Nishoba, that's always something that we've prided ourselves on. And it does give us an opportunity to reflect and grow, uh, so that we can do better for our students. And so tonight, I'm going to share with the committee a high-level overview of our data. Um, please be aware that at the school-based level, our school-based teams with our principals are looking at this data with a curriculum lens and a student growth lens at particular grade levels and with subgroups. So that is happening at the same time and adjacent to the work at the macro level. Within the presentation in the packet, you'll also find an appendix which provides more detailed data as a reference, including data relative to our subgroups. Alita, next slide. In terms of structure of the, uh, overview, the presentation has five parts. Um, and I'm going to move through it pretty quickly and then answer any questions at the end, um, beginning with, uh, just information about accountability. Superintendent Downing referenced that with chronic absenteeism, uh, as an example. Uh, then provide highlights of our MCAS performance alongside the state, taking a look at some graphs with our cohort performance and trends since twenty seventeen, uh, providing a summary analysis by content area, again, high-level overviews here, and then an outline of next steps in that appendix that I just referenced. Next slide, Alita. There are two slides here relative to accountability. Uh, the, the Massachusetts Accountability System is designed to measure how a school or a district is doing and what kind of support is needed. That's its purpose. Twenty twenty-three, last year, was the first year since twenty nineteen where school districts received a full accountability rating, as was the case last year. And then again, this year, Nishoba's classification, as you see here, is making substantial progress towards targets and not requiring assistance. And I provided some more detailed information about accountability on the next slide. And I provided some more detailed information about accountability on the next slide. So I'm going to work to just speak to this slide here, um recognizing there's a lot here. The accountability system considers both a normative component on the left of the slide. And a criterion reference component on the right of the slide. The normative component um compares schools to other schools in the state. That serve similar grades and is reported as a percentile. So you can see that for us over here on the left. On the right is the criterion reference component. And this targets five components that you see outlined there in the number two. Achievement, student growth, English learner proficiency. High school completion, which I will note also includes completion of advanced coursework. So our offerings. Relative to APs. And project lead the way to come um and chronic absenteeism. Improvement targets are set by the state for each of these categories for all subgroups. And accountability is determined. Groups are all students group, that's all of our students, including all of our student subgroups. And then our lowest performing quartile. Um so making sure that our students who fall in the bottom um twenty-five percent are also growing in achieve achieving. Based on all of this information, school districts are categorized based on their progress towards targets. And whether or not they're requiring intervention or assistance. And as mentioned, Neshoba is is within a substantial progress towards top. Uh progress towards in meeting their targets. Next slide. This slide um outlines the statewide performance versus the district performance. In all areas, as you'll see here, the district performance outpaced the state performance in grades three through eight are um. At all levels, the district outperformed the state by. A minimum of seventeen percent and then grade ten by a minimum of twenty percent. Um with that said, um we have some major takeaways here. In performance, particularly relative to ELA performance. Last year, the state performance and the district performance saw any an increase. That was last year. This year, both the state and the district saw a decline. In math, the state results stayed steady through grade eight and saw a decline at grade ten. And for us as a district, results showed slight increases both through grade eight and at grade ten. And then in science, the state saw a slight increase in proficiency while the district saw. Um a small decline of one percent through grade eight and grade ten. Next slide, Alita. This chart shows a number of stu- students falling within each proficiency category for each assessed um category. And and clusters together the combined performance of students meeting expectations and exceeding expectations for ELA. Science, technology, engineering and and math here. And as you can see. Um and I provided similar slides and a s- similar gra- graphs last year for comparison sake. Grade ten ranks the highest across all content areas um. Followed by grade eight um and then some noted improvements in grade five. Of note here, and I'll speak more to this in subsequent subsequent slides, is in grades three through five. We're seeing that our math proficiency is outpaced our ELA proficiency. Next slide. In terms of cohort perfor- performance here. The cohort graphs here show performance for the same group of students over the course of time with us at Neshoba. Um this particular s- slide shows our current ninth through eleventh graders and really shows a macro level here. At the historical gap between the sti- the district and the state performance. So you can see that with the red line showing the state math. And the blue line showing the district math and the green line showing the state ELA and the yellow line showing the district. The chart on the top left shows our current eleventh graders. So those are our students who took the tenth grade MCAS last year. And our current tenth graders, top right-hand corner of the slides. Who did not take MCAS as ninth graders, but they will take the assessment this spring. Next slide. Here we have our grade five through grade eight cohorts. Um and we see that general downward trend in ELA performance in each cohort, again mirroring the state. In math, we see cohort improvements in grades five and eight. We are keeping our eyes on middle school math and as I have mentioned and more to come to the for the committee. But middle school math is is in need of a curriculum review and we're in the process of that curriculum review as we speak. And the purpose of that is to can can carry on the work completed at the elementary level through grade five with our high quality instructional materials. Implementation um for math with our bridges. Uh and we're showing um. Some improvements, we believe, as a result of that implementation. The growth in grade five um and in large pockets, grades three through five in math are reinforcing that our math. Adoption is having a positive i- impact and more on that to come. Next slide. This quadrant graph we have here shows student achievement versus growth by grade level. Um with the state growth achievement marker marked as the star in the middle of the graph. Above the star, um we have higher growth, higher achievement. That's far top right-hand quadrant. That's definitely where we want to be. Right? We want to have all students high growth, high achievement. So that that is where we want to see all of our our bubbles. Growth percentage categories are identify identified by the key here at each grade level. Um and you can see that typical growth is identified between forty and sixty percent and Neshoba is maintaining. Um at all grade levels within the typical growth category, which is strong. While our goal is above fifty over in that top right-hand um quadrant, we are at all grade levels. Falling within the typical growth range for ELA. Uh next slide. This graph shows our ELA performance since twenty twenty-two. And while the decline um that I have mentioned reflected at the state level. Um mirrors the decline we've seen at the district level. We really are looking closely at the decline. Um and we are working in teaching and learning to take a look at this with a curriculum lens. And in large part, the declines that we see here are directly related to the domains of reading. Specifically uh text complexity and language. And so while we um. We definitely do not want to see declines in performance over time with our cohorts or or just spot on with our grade levels. We have been aware of the needs here for building out foundations for reading for our youngest learners. We know that this has been an area of need and which is why we accelerated the curriculum review process. Last year uh and to really um bolster up our foundational reading. Practices in the instructional materials that our our teachers have. Uh to booster foundational literacy with um our new literacy curriculum. Our strengthening of foundations integrity and the implementation of universal screeners for early identification. So we are digging in here and we're pleased uh about the work that's happening here um and the data that we see here reinforces. Um that need um and we're very pleased that that work is underway right now. Next slide. This um graph here shows performance over time, three through eight for our different schools. We are working with our principals with this data and they are working with their faculty and staff at specific grade levels. That are necessitating further support and instruction through the implementation of our new curriculum. Principals will be sharing this data and more specific school-based data with their school councils. Next slide. So I've outlined here um s- um some notes of analysis that I've referenced so far through the slides. Well, Neshoba's performance is outpa- outpacing the state averages at all grade levels. Um we see areas uh reflective of needs for improvement and specific areas of need are noted in the re- reading and language strands in particular. At the elementary level, most grade levels have shown a decline in reading questions year over year. Again, reinforcing why we made the moves we did last year with our curriculum review and with our implementation underway currently. Uh concurrently, the data analysis points to writing as an area of strength district ride with a percentage of correct responses on the essay improving in grades four, five and. Seven and writing improving overall in grades three through seven. And I say that. Um and with uh just to underscore that there's improvement needed across the board. Um but we do see areas of strength in those domains. As well as um some um in- increasing proficiency levels for our students with disabilities subgroup. Um and continued work necessary um relative to subgroup performance across the board. And I've highlighted. To subgroups there at the bottom of this slide um that saw particular declines um with performance last year. Next slide. Onto math. Um our math achievement versus growth here, similar chart to ELA, all again, all grade levels falling in typical growth. Uh similar to ELA with the state um data marked with the star. In looking um at grade six mentioned earlier. Um last year, you may remember that I mentioned that we were looking at the grade five scores and watching that cohort growth. This is that same um that same cohort they're now in grade uh they were in grade six. Um while growth and support is needed, there has been some improvement, not the improvement that we want. Um but this particular cohorts s- um SGP or student growth percentile. Last year when they were fifth graders was forty-one. Um and so now we see it as forty-eight. So again, not uh we want to see that red dot. Top right-hand corner, but there has been some movement there um which is promising and um. We're going to continue to work to watch and support this particular cohort. We see the strongest student growth percentile percentiles here reflected in grades seven, eight and ten. So the upper grades. Next slide. This graph shows our math performance since twenty twenty-two. Um we see steady performance in grades three and ten. Um and in uh steady proficiency levels in grades three, four and five above sixty. Um which we are hoping to see that this is um reflected by our continued implementation of that high quality instructional materials at the elementary level. And we'll be setting our students up for success in middle school. Um and in middle school, improvements in grade seven cohort-wise and grade level-wise. And again, we're looking forward to that curriculum review and decisions there to support our middle school math program this year. Next slide. Again, similar graph to ELA. This is our performance over time, three through eight with math. Again, we're working with our principals um and their faculty and staff at specific grade levels, particular where we're seeing some sho- sharp increases. Um what is happening there in those gray levels in that school in those schools so we can translate and transfer those practices. In other places. This is particularly beneficial with our new aligned K to eight schedule where we've created opportunities for that. Horizontal conversations to happen district-wide. Next slide. Some areas of note here relative to our math MCAS highlight analysis. Again, similar to ELA, Neshoba's performance outpaced the state averages. We're beginning to see some signs of recovery um and proficiency increasing with bridges and mathematics. That's our new math curriculum. Grade five showed a notable increase in all three schools, surpassing the state performance overall by twenty-two percent. Overall, with the curriculum lens um overlaid on top of the. Data analysis lens, particularly with math, we're seeing areas of improvement needed in numbers and operations and fractions. In grades three through five and the number system in grades six to eight, neither have correlations. Um together, three through five and six to eight, and these concepts affect most areas of math we know and especially algebra readiness. And so as we engage in Neshoba's middle school curriculum review, we are specifically looking at these areas. Um I've I've pointed out in note, um a grade ten performance reflected a decrease in number of students not meeting expectations, decreasing from. Five percent to two percent. Um which is great. And again, our continued work um with our subgroups um and. Uh an opportunity for potentially uh another presentation with superintendent's permission. And the chair's permission, but um. Levels of data and monitoring growth and progress through our PLC work is part of the work of our PLCs and our MTSS process. So when I speak to at the school level or at the grade level, um our teams are working. With looking at all of this data overlaid on top of curriculum-based measures, classroom-based measu- measures in our universal screening. Next slide. In terms of science, um our our grade five um and our grade eight are assessed. We'll look to continue um gains in middle school with our Open Sayad implementation. We're in the second year of a phased-in implementation for middle school science. We um will have implemented four units by the end of this year with full implementation last year. Um of note, this year's science MCAS will take on a new format with a more heavy emphasis on the practice standards. And performance tasks and our Open Sayad curriculum directly aligns with this kind of questioning and this kind of assessment. Um so we'll be looking um ahead to see um what our students' performance looks like on MCAS. Next year after after moving through this new assessment format in our new curriculum. Next slide. Again, similar talking points to our ELA and math. We um uh principals are working with their staff um about school-based specific data and we'll be sharing school-based. Specific data with school councils. And we're working to leverage what's working in one school and and digging in there to translate and transfer that knowledge to um. Colleagues and other cohorts. Next slide. Again, similar to ELA and math, uh Neshoba's science um remained fairly consistent. Um outpacing state averages at all grade levels. Um of of note, grade eights twenty percent higher, grade tens twenty-one percent higher. Um while our grade five performance took a dip uh last year, it's risen back up um. This past spring, so we were pleased to see that with sixty-three percent proficiency. We're going to keep a close eye on our our Open Sayad implementation. At the middle level and particularly with the new framework for MCAS um and the alignment there. And again, um continued narrative here with watching um our subgroup performance and making sure we're paying attention to subgroup. Performance throughout the year um alongside our PLCs. Okay, next slide. And next steps. Um much of it I've worked to reference in my talking points throughout um. The presentation, but these are some highlights that the committee is, I believe, already aware of, but are are working to uh directly. Um support student growth. Again, MCAS being one data point um in the context of a larger data picture. But it really points to opportunities for us to dig in again at the student level and the curriculum level or where are there areas. Um that we really want to fine-tune, hone and provide our teachers with um maybe some stronger instructional materials. And so we see that um laid out here for you on this slide. We have um the work happening right now. Um at the elementary level with math and literacy. Our continued support with bridges and mathematics and a particular emphasis on intervention and enrichment this year. Um at the K to five level for math. Continued work with leveraging our coaches, continued face-in approach um for Open Sayad. And really using um the feedback process with our principals, our assistant principals and now our department heads. Um uh to provide feedback to um help improve um. The learning experience in the classroom through feedback to the educator and and a supportive and a collaborative focused way. Next slide. At the six through twelve level in particular. Um our curriculum work continues. Um we are continuing, I think Superintendent Downing mentioned it at the last meeting. We're continuing our partnership with Desi's Kaleidoscope Network and working directly with them. Um and we engaged in a learning walk with them um last week at the high school and using Desi's. And using Desi's deeper learning tools, particularly the um look for tools in partnership. Um with teachers and with the department heads at the high school and Dr. Boynton's team. To um look at uh learning in the classroom to ensure that we're moving and improving to ensure instructionally strong and equitable. Learning experiences for our students. Coupled with that, um. Curriculum Director Laura Paddington and I met with the ELA um department chair just today and we are going to be creating um a vertical six through twelve. Um working group um to support and strengthen the vertical alignment six through twelve. For writing um and then for reading um and working to um create benchmark assessments to support the work there six through twelve. As mentioned, we are going to complete that six to eight math curriculum review phases one and two this year. And we'll be sure to keep the committee updated on that um as well as engaging in a nine through twelve math curriculum review. Uh that I know um Director McBridey and Department Chair Melbourne have have been working steadily on on the beginnings of that. And then we're continuing to work with our nine through twelve science curriculum review and 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 we're in phase two now. And when appropriate, I would be pleased to provide the committee with an update of all of that work. And then finally, last slide. In terms of assessment, we are working to continue to leverage our tools or Renaissance learning as a universal screener. And this year focusing on using it as progress monitoring. Um and creating custom based assessments to monitor progress throughout the school year. Beyond the universal screening windows, that's work in progress and work for us to tackle this year to strengthen our teams with those tools. Working with our principals, coaches and teams throughout our PLC model and strengthening and and sharing our data analysis practices throughout the school year at grade levels. Using a targeted approach to monitor student growth, I referenced monitoring the growth of student subgroups. And now our teams are also monitoring those lowest performing students identified by Desi. Um as well, again, throughout the school year. And then, as I mentioned and and spoke about during the last committee member, just the continued inflammation of now we have the systems and structures in place district wide. Now we are working to use those si- systems and structures to leverage student learning and growth. So now we're the expectation is we. We're expecting these systems and structures to work and dig in and support our teams and our teachers, faculty and staff and our ministers administrators with um. The tools they need to improve student learning and progress. And then um the appendix is included at the end of the presentation.
Thanks, Laura. That was really informative. I wonder if anyone on the committee has any questions. Uh Amy Vessels.
Um I wanted to clarify something actually really quickly. Um when you talked about the work that they're doing with um. That research for better teaching, I think it is, right, they're working with? And you were talking about the feedback, right, working with them on feedback. Is that feedback? Um I guess I'm is that improving feedback that department heads give through evaluations? Or is that improving feedback that teachers give on assessment on, you know, on on um assignments and stuff?
Thank you for the the opportunity to clarify. I would say both are needed. Um but that particular bullet point speaks to um uh analyzing teaching for student results is a course offered. Um through RBT. That we are utilizing for all of our principals, assistant principals and department heads. To improve the quality of feedback to that that they're giving to teachers through the evaluation process. Through the mini observation and then through the formative and summative assessment process. It is part of how we are supporting not only our entire team, but how we're supporting our department heads. With the tools they need in order to be able to supervise and evaluate the teachers within their department. So that's what that bullet point is referencing in terms of feedback for student learning. That um I you know, yes, um and um that is work that is ongoing through our curriculum work and our work with deeper learning kaleidoscope. Yes.
Um I actually have a second question, but if Amy wants to go.
No, why don't you just go ahead, Amy?
Okay, um my other question um had to do with the subgroups like uh at the high school. Um I guess I'm wondering, I know with the K through eight level, you have different, um you have like the Renaissance, you have different tests that you can give through like formative assessments. And you can check on that and you have like the that what I need now block at the elementary school. So like what's happening at the high school for kids that are struggling? How are you? Um what are you doing for them? I guess is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, that's a great question and we're, you know, as I mentioned at the last committee meeting, we're working to build out those systems and structures for the tier two. Um and I know that's what you're referencing here, whether um you know, as we conclude our scheduled pilot and we look to, you know, hopefully be able to implement the PLC structure. And the flex block at the high school, the needs of our students exist now. Um we are having conversations about data and subgroup performance with the department heads. Um I uh would say these are um. Uh developing practices for um for our high school team. Um and so um. I can um tell you that all of our department heads have engaged in conversations with teaching and learning. Um to increase our collective awareness around subgroup performance. And that's something that we're working on. Finding the time and space and the tools that our departments need to target student learning in the interim continues to be an area of need and a focus for us and as part of our work.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Amy Cohen.
Thank you. Um let me put down my hand here. Ironically, now I have a stable internet connection.
Just in time for MCAS.
I know, right? Um so I I think for me, this MCAS data is is. Is. Really useful only when you look at the trends and when this presentation has shown. You know, a few charts with downward trends that um. Are concerning to me. And so I guess my question is that in the next steps. When you talk about curriculum and and instruction, um I know that we have a really well thought out curriculum review plan in place. But I'm wondering, like, what kind of short term actions can we take this year? That impact the instructional piece of the next steps? And I I heard you say that you're going to be putting together a um. It wasn't a focus group, a work group. Um for six through twelve. Will will instructional practices like will that be part of what they're looking at like kind of short term or immediate? Changes that can be made?
I can see that Superintendent Downing unmuted himself.
Ms. Friend, I would, if you want, if you have anything you wanted to respond.
No, I did. We have talked about this at length, so I I know that you're pleased to speak to this.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, I I um. Certainly see the observation that you're making the data sets as well. Um one of the things we're trying to gain a sense of is what does the trend data mean here? And where I'm I'm looking for some answers myself is relative data to the state and other school systems of well, there's a similar pattern. I would like to remind the committee that twenty nineteen was the last year we had. Where we could look at trend data that was uninterrupted over the previous five years. Since then, we didn't have MCAS in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty one, we had a truncated MCAS. In twenty twenty two, we returned to the first full version of the MCAS with some additional assessments at that time. In twenty twenty three. Uh there were some piloting of AI scoring last year, full AI scoring of the written components of the assessments. And then next year, the state is moving to a new vendor. So we didn't receive any of the student writing samples. We typically get twenty five percent of the questions back along with writing samples. We got zero this year because of the change in vendors. They kept that information and didn't share it with schools. And so it, you know, as school leaders, we're. We're a little bit frustrated with that and and we we look at those numbers with caution, thus. Telling us why we got to look internally and have our internal measures that can be delivered durably year over year that we know and can say with certainty. Cause they're happening in front of us of what we can do with growth. So that is not to say we debated, like, do we bring those points up in the presentation? And we did not want to influence that exact question that you had, uh Ms. Cohen. Because we just want to be honest about the data we're presenting. Uh I think Ms. Friend and I would both say we would like to see uh the performance data come back at higher levels. There's no question about that. We're just trying to understand a little bit more about the data. Ms. Friend did mention in her presentation one particular area, and that was around text complexity. And so, yes, to your question, we are working with teachers in those PLC formats. Uh around the instructional practices specific to text complexity complexity, because that is something we were able to tease out. So we'll continue to do the necessary data mining that we need to 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 take. But I would ask anyone that's looking at trend data over time to look at it with with a bit of a filter. Uh because of all the disruptions and interruptions that happened um in recent years due to COVID.
I I would also add, if I may, thank you Superintendent Downing. Um that we, the state saw an increase in the data last year and we saw an increase in our ELA data last year as well. Um and so that wi- with a decline. Statewide and then district wide this year, just questions arise. Why the increase last year? Why the decline this year across the board? It 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 just brings out questions. Again, we don't, we don't place blame. You know, the data is the data, the data is our data, our our goal is continual improvement for each and every student. But it it just begs the question, why? Why the increases last year at both levels? Why the decreases this year at both levels?
Yeah, I agree. And and I think trying to um put some of those numbers in context for. Community members who will be looking at those charts.
Sure.
Drawing conclusions is is really important. So, thank you.
We're very, we're grateful you asked that question because we wanted to speak specifically to it. So thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Yep.
I think I see Robin's hand.
Yeah, so just curious, you know, as you're building out um. As you're building out, you know, next steps and and how to um. You know, work with the students to improve these numbers. Obviously, you know, data is important and shows us the trends and tells a story of what's going on. But I'm just curious, is there anything going on within the school where we're working directly with the kids on feedback? In terms of how the curriculum is that is current today and and, you know, is impacting their learning? I mean, granted, I know probably in the in the lower years, that's a more difficult conversation to have. But as the students get older, you know, maybe it's middle school or fifth grade. Are we talking to them and and saying? How is this all working for you? What would be helpful for you? Um? And, you know, I I guess tapping into the students' responses to what they're being provided.
I think um, you know, it 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 likely varies from teacher to to teacher um, yeah, in terms of how they're including that in their lesson planning. And and using student voice to um inform next steps. Um I I will tell you that it is definitely part of our lexicon with our building principles and our assistant principles. Uh Superintendent Donnie have been um working on building out a survey strategy. Um that gets at all of our stakeholders, including our students. And our students are included uh as an important stakeholder um in that strategy. And so we're working on building that. We've done a lot of surveys and we're working to really fine tune. Um um the types of feedback that are going to be meaningful for our our students' lived experience in this school. Again, I see Superintendent Downing's unmuted and I chair, I don't want to overstep, but.
No, thank you, Ms. Friend. I just, I was blaming, I wanted to add just a an anecdote, a personal anecdote. And we've been doing these walks together. We recently did some walks in the middle school level. And we actually had a chance to to walk in a couple of the science classrooms and engage with students. As they were um executing the open side curriculum. The feedback from them was um was strong feedback because they're doing science, right? They're not reading about science, they're doing science. And and so the feedback was um was positive feedback that they were sharing as we were having those conversations. Again, that's an anecdotal account, not as as technical as a feedback loop as as Assistant Superintendent was referring to, but I thought it might add some color.
I have a quick question for you guys. I wonder, um, I'm not a fan of teaching to the test or training students to take tests. But as part of your curriculum design review process. To investigate ways that test preparation can be. Kind of organically inserted into the day to day routines. So that when the kids sit to take the tests, I mean, some of the exercises are actually really taxing where they have to, for example, take three different texts. Consume them all. They might be about bats. And, you know, then they have to take these three texts and they have to synthesize them and they have to identify similarities across them. Are you guys helping or rather encouraging the educators? To use some of those test taking strategies in the classroom thereby? You know, teaching them synthesis skill sets, but also training them for the test.
Ms. Randall defer.
I was gonna say, please let me um because I um. I think test taking is a genre in itself. It it ju- it it it. We ne- we never, like a genre in terms of a unit of instruction in itself, not a big unit, but it is, it's a type of on demand performance. Um that from my perspective is a genre itself. And we want to make sure that students feel as confident. So the answer to me is yes. Um we hope that um the high quality instructional materials that we're providing our teachers. Um provide students with all kinds of experiences throughout the year so they feel confident when they step into an assessment regardless and they can transfer their skills. But I I I, there is utility in um saying what it is, right? And it it is a type of an assessment. Uh so we want our students to feel comfortable and not um. Um not step into the assessment um. Um. Would not appropriate expectations for what they're going to be asked to do, if you will. So so, yes.
The only piece I was going to add to that, uh Madam Chair, is that uh our teams also look at some of it is when you, when you get the item analysis pieces back. You get to understand prior prioritization of units to advance earlier in the school year to ensure that they're receiving that instruction. So they're doing that work as well.
Great. Right, so I'm not seeing any other hands. So it looks like we're going to move on from the MCAS presentation and we are going to move over. Uh to our youth risk behavior survey twenty twenty four results. And I will let Kirk queue it up.
You bet. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Uh it's my pleasure to introduce to the committee once again. Honor return engagement here, our Director of Health Wellness and Safety, uh Ms. Mar- Mariah Zwicker. And the youth behavior uh the youth risk behavior survey is a tool that we have used uh in Neshoba now for many years. And if you remember Nurse Gilbeck, he came and spoke to these uh elements as well. And now it is our director's turn. So Ms. Wicker, with that, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and uh thank you, Chair and uh the school committee for letting me come and present. Cause as much as we do education and it's super important in our schools, it's also a good idea to have an idea about what our youth is um engaging in in terms of risky behaviors. Um so that we can guide our practices in order to support them uh psychosocially, emotionally, as well as educationally. Um if you want to queue up the slides, Alita, that would be so great. Okay. Perfect. Um so welcome to the youth risk behavior survey data. I will be calling it the YRBS moving forward, just because sometimes it gets garbled in my mouth. Next slide, please, Alita. Um on this slide, you'll see both um full reports. They are pretty lengthy and pretty um in depth. The top one that says full Neshovo YRBS. The top one that says full Neshoba YRBS report is s- school-specific data. Um, however, when you're reading that, because our sub-populations sometimes do not have significant numbers, the aggregate data is also pasted on the slide. So you will see mentions throughout the data, um, to information that isn't necessarily pertinent to Neshoba specifically around, um, specific, um, populations of people, um, races and ethnicities. The full aggregate report, uh, does reflect the 10 districts statewide that Emerson Hospital works with um, and seeks to take, take the test to get a, an idea about what's happening more in a, a central, uh, north re- uh, region. Next slide, please. So, um, as Superintendent Downing mentioned, we have been participating in the YRBS, um, for quite a number of years. I was able to trace back at least to 2018, um, from previous slides, uh, looking through the data. And really what the idea and the goal is, is to survey, uh, grades six, uh, and eight, and then our high schoolers, uh, about how they are doing from, um, mental health-wise resiliency. And then they focus on a group of about eight topics, um, including substances and driving and body image and, um, cellphone use and, and bullying and so forth. And, uh, we use this data, once we get the results, to inform what is going on specifically within our community of students and, um, to give us suggestions or guides, uh, to how we can address those specific behaviors. Um, maybe in curriculum or, you know, health and wellness, uh, classes. And also we've used it to, uh, write a grant, one, uh, in particular has just been submitted uh, with regards to behavioral health and SEL. And then also we're able to look at trends over time, uh, and to terms of what, um, what our youth is, is engaging in, um, outside of school and outside of the classroom. Next slide, please. Um, this is our demographic profile, um, of students who did participate. We had, um, high nineties participation percentage in both sixth and eighth grade. And then, uh, uh, a high seventy-five percent in the high school, which has been uh, in line with what we've seen in previous years. Next slide, please. Um, these are the major highlights that I'm going to be talking about briefly in the, in the following slides about what we saw in terms of increase of risky, um, risky behaviors. And then, uh, some decreases of some risky behaviors. So on the positive side, um, we've seen decreases, uh, about feelings of depression and considering suicide. We've seen, um, decreases on people spending time on social media and, uh, substance use and body image with desires to be thinner. Um, and weight issue, issues affecting how, how students felt about themselves. And then on, um, some increasing trends on some negative experiences, we have an increase of students feeling bullied and, um, feeling like they spend too much time on social media as well as maybe not having a trusted adult at school to talk to. And issues around, uh, some sleep and not getting at least seven hours. And then also looking for, um, maybe some unwanted contact online and, uh, maybe not heading to class because they're not feeling safe at school. Next slide. Um, this is an overview about what students are doing with regards to coping strategies and things that they are doing. Um, overall, you'll see that the sixth graders are, um, are watching TV and gaming and talking with people. Our eighth graders are also watching television and gaming and social media. And then our high schoolers are, again, TV and social media and, and some exercises are the ways, uh, and strategies that people are reaching out. I was really pleased to see that substance uses, uh, such as drinking and drugs and cigarettes were really on the low, low numbers for what, uh, students are doing for, um, to cope with, with stress or, you know, in times of need. Next slide, please. Um, you'll see here that we, uh, students are spending less time on homework at home. Um, but they're also sleeping less. Um, so there's some trends there. You'll notice that there, um, are some blocks with, uh, that are kind of highlighted in red. And those are what the company, uh, that works with Emerson Market Street is, um, identifying as a five percent greater, uh, five percent or greater increase or decrease in the changes from 2022 to 2024. So it kind of highlights where, um, what they consider to be significant data with increases and decreases. So throughout the presentation, you'll see those blocks of red, um, when there was a great, uh, an increase of five percent or greater with, with, um, what our data showed from 2022 or some, in some cases, 2020, um, and so forth. Next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned before, we have a decrease with, um, depression and self-harm, especially at the, um, sixth grade and high school, um, levels. Next slide, please. Um, specifically about body image that I spoke about before, the desire to be thinner has decreased at the high school level. And, um, it's kind of a mixed bag. Some sixth graders are looking to increase. Uh, sixth grader are looking to, um, you know, just kind of looking at their perceptions. It's, it's interesting how, you know, at the high school level, there's, uh, students who are really looking to gain some weight, um, but having an effect on their own perception of how they are as a human has, uh, decreased, um, or stayed stagnant, uh, from 2022. Next slide, please. Substance uses is down. Um, this speaks to vaping, marijuana uses, alcohol consumption and binge drinking. Next slide, please. Um, operating cell phones while driving or, uh, driving or riding with someone under the influence of alcohol, um, has taken a decrease. Which I was really pleased to see, um, because that not only affects our youth and the people operating the vehicles as well as the other drivers on the, uh, on the street. Next slide, please. Uh, this is, this I had spoken about, uh, before at the beginning is a trend that we're seeing an increase of, um, uh, incidences of cyberbullying as well as coping with bullying and being bullied at school and not wanting to attend. There is an increase there. Next slide. Screen time in social media. Um, there has been, uh, I thought it was interesting that, um, our sixth grade population reported that there's less involvement about monitoring of cellphone usage from their parents. Um, there's a variety of whether kids follow the rules or not the rules. But in terms of specific parameters that are set, there's less engagement, um, from the parent involvement in cellphone usage. Um, and then screen time in social media and perception of, uh, time spent. There is a feeling that, um, students feel as though they themselves are, um, spending too much time on their cell phones and social media. And, um, I, I appreciate that, um, just in terms of them evaluating themselves, I think is a really healthy behavior, um, overall. And so, um, that reflection, although it has increased that they're spending too much time on their cell phones or social media, but it's a self-evaluation and so self-awareness is always really important. Next, but, next slide, please. Um, and this is just kind of the last snippet that I have pulled out of the presentation. As I said, there's about eighty-nine slides, um, specific to our district as well as the full aggregate, depending on which, uh, survey, um, link that you engage in. However, um, this is talking about the viewing of pornography, which where eighth graders and our high schoolers has increased as well as, um, we have an increase of sixth grade and eighth graders being, um, having some unwanted contact online as well as, um, an increase in the eighth grade level, pretty significant, um, six percent from 2022 to 2024, which was fifteen percent of, um, sexually explicit messages or photos being sent to them electronically. Next slide, please. And now, um, I'd like to open it up for questions, comments, clarifications. Thank you, Alita, for sharing the slides for me.
Thanks so much for that. That was really informative. Um, I wonder if the committee has any questions? Alright, I'm not seeing any golden hands.
Oh, I see one. Ms. Vessels is there.
Um, I just wondered if, um, I know vaping has been a big issue over the last few years in schools. Is what we're seeing at the high school, like the principals?
So made me happy, but, yeah. Um, Amy Vessels, have jogged your memory or your, your mind?
I, I believe she was speaking. Do you want to rephrase again? You might have flipped in and out and I just want to make sure I got the whole question. But I, I believe you're speaking about the vaping and the decrease.
Yeah, I was wondering, I know it's been a big issue in a lot of schools over the last few years. And is what we're seeing in the data on this, the self-reported data, is it matching what principals are seeing um, at schools in terms of how much they're dealing with vaping? Um, was, you know, catching students vaping or dealing with that as an issue?
Um, I.
I think I'll take on this question as I.
Oh, thank you Superintendent Downing. Yep.
It is a conversation that's come up in superintendent circles. I haven't seen the data of those other school systems, but what I'm hearing is it's not as prevalent. It, it, it's interesting to me. I mean, I have some theories and thoughts about it, like the pandemic had lots of different types of impact. And I'm wondering, did it have an impact in terms of like sort of the social cycle of things like vaping use? And because kids were in their homes for quite a period of time and not, it's just a theory, I don't know. Um, but it is something that other superintendents have shared with me that, uh, uh, vaping use is down in their, in their respective school systems.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright.
Hi, sorry. I don't know, don't know how to put up my hand there.
Oh, that's okay, John. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the presentation there. I did two questions. One was, um, thanks for reviewing it. I guess, were there any takeaways? There's just, there's a lot going on there. Is there anything that you wanted to bring up or you, you had special observations on? And number two was, what, and how does this get used or doesn't get used in, in the school for the, the teachers or the administrators? Where, where, where does this go?
Thank you for those questions. Um, in terms of.
I'll, I'll take the second one, Ms. Wicker.
Okay, great. Uh, um, I'm sorry, didn't mean to step on your toes. Do you want to start Superintendent Downing?
Take the first question. I'll take the second one.
Okay. Um, in terms of what stood out to me, I was really pleased to see, um, the decrease of substance use. Um, I really have a, a concern about that overall, especially because the brain doesn't really stop developing until the age of twenty-five. And we know that, um, when students choose to experiment or engage in substance use the earlier, uh, they may choose to do that, um, can really lead to long-term health concerns as well as an increased risk of addiction. And so the idea that our students are not, um, you know, it is a self-reported test. However, um, I, I like to believe that the trends are, you know, that they're answering appropriate, you know, true to themselves. And I, I really appreciated the lack of substance use uh, or the, the decreases in substance use and engaging in, um, vehicular, um, distracted driving. Because I just think that overall, they, um, maybe the education or the information has gotten out or, you know, there's been some really moving, something has, has connected with them where people are choosing to either delay their experimentation or not experiment at all. And I just think that's, the longer that kids can hold off and, and be safe is, is good for me. So I was really pleased to see that. And then in terms of what we're, we're doing as, as a school and what we're using for this data, I did mention a little bit in the beginning of the slide, but Superintendent Downing, you'd want to take it away? Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Wicker shared this data with all of our principals, uh, at the end of last spring. This, we got this at the very end of last spring. And so they, they absorbed that, speak to it a little bit as part of their state of the school reports that we do over the summer. But also informs them and, and their mental health teams on what are the types of topics and things that we need to address in our advisory circles at the middle school level? And with our counseling staff, the high school level and how to support students. So as we're working with that, we're looking at those trends to understand where to put our emphasis. Um, I'll give an example of the past as vaping use, uh, spiked in the past. There was a development of a vaping education program for students who were identified vaping. And we've kept that program over time. So, uh, we do look at this data and we, we respond to it um, as we see those trends happening. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I have a quick question for you guys. One thing that did stand out to me as I'm trying to absorb all of it is, um, there was a slide that talked about parental oversight. And I was actually really dismayed by how little parental oversight is being reported. And I wonder, Kirk, if this is some, if this is like a moment to educate our parents through family university or whatever it may be, to say, you know, the middle schoolers especially need a lot of parent oversight with their social media stuff that then trickles into the school and has all kinds of reverberating effects on teaching and learning. And so I know that probably most people my age don't use Snapchat, for example. And yet that's what all of our kids are using. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity here to do like a workshopping exercise to teach parents how to use Snapchat so that they can help monitor behavior, things like that. So I wonder if that's something that you could get behind or if that's just too wild.
Well, uh, Madam Chair, I appreciate the recommendation. This is one of those things that sometimes feel like chasing smoke. And what I mean by that is, I remember, uh, back in the day when this, this thing came along that kids were chatting on called Facebook. And, and so all of us as adults said, we got to find out what that's about and got on Facebook. And we all started joining Facebook. And you know what the kids did? They left Facebook. They went to these other places and these other channels. And so I remember a presentation, I wish I can remember the presenter's name. It, it, it is around monitoring less about the apps and more about sort of the cultural values and expectations in the household around that. Um, so I'm going to take your suggestion, uh, back to the cabinet team for discussion. And, uh, I think we need to look for some opportunities of how we can educate families around that. Uh, you might also understand that, uh, when we do those things, we often get the people that are engaged in those topics to come and listen to them. Oftentimes for validation of what their own, uh, household values are. And we're not getting to the people who really need it. Um, so we got to look at how to have that reach. So your point is well taken. We will, um, take it back to the cabinet team. As you know, we're trying to reduce that at the high school um, with the recent, uh, cellphone policy in the classroom. Um, but I agree with you. Uh, what can we do more of?
Great. Alright, I think maybe all the golden hands are down. So again, thank you very much for that update on that piece of strategic work. We appreciate you being here, Ms. Wicker, and helping us understand this more. Um, so guys, if there's nothing else, we're going to move the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wicker.
Thank you for your time. We're going to move to the agenda to, um, this, what looks like a very large item, but, um, it is just one, technically, one thing that I'm going to turn over to Ms. Vessels. We're going to be looking at the next round of policy shifts. And you have here listed not only in the agenda, but also in your meeting materials, the spreadsheet that includes all of the different policies that po- our policy subcommittee is asking us to shift. And Amy Vessels, if you could step up here and maybe help us understand where there are substantive things that we really do need to dig in on potentially.
Uh, yeah, the only one that I marked there in yellow is, um, CCB, um, about staff relations. And we just added in, um, the phrase, so the opening paragraph was, uh, originally, then a show regional school committee expects the superintendent to establish clear understandings on the part of all personnel, the working relationships in the school district. And then we added adhering to the appropriate contracts because this policy is really about like what administrator you go to, you know, like what the chain of command is, kind of, if you have a matter that you need to refer to administrative action or whatever. And so we added that small phrase in there and that was really only the, the only, um, thing we wanted to bring to your attention and see if, how people felt about that.
Alright, so starting with CCB, everyone, um, are there any questions or concerns about? All right, so starting with CCB, everyone, um, are there any questions or concerns about anything? Especially that one piece that we added? All right, so thank you for that. Now I wonder if anybody noticed anything in the other fair, in the long list of other policies that Amy, you're telling me that the changes are relatively minor um, thing. So Scott, I think I see a hand. Which policy are you looking at?
So first of all, E, B, C is in Charlie, D is in David.
Um, emergency closings?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just, you know, I'd, I'd noticed that we changed children to students. I thought maybe we should also add staff as people we care about.
Um, Amy, is that, is that change that you made from children to students um, from, recommended from MASC?
Yeah, the only things we call your attention to pretty much are ones where we've added something in. That's why I mentioned CCB. So yes, this was a change from um, MASC.
I guess MASC doesn't care about staff?
Well, because it does say driving, traffic, parking conditions, these are things that might, we might want to identify that. Kirk, did you want to weigh in on this potentially or?
I just think in this case, it's just a, a policy that's written to the students. Um, but um, I, I'm working to get to that particular policy on my computer right now to pull up that language. It was, um, it, it, can you give me the letters again?
Yep, E, B, C, D.
There it is. I got it, I got it. Okay, um, so I, I think, you know, in the case of that, you know, I would support any recommendation if staff was added to that statement.
Okay. So Amy, maybe you can make note of that.
On, on my November first um, common message, I will be sending out the annual reminder to our community of how the snow day process. And you might remember from my message in the past, I include um, our staff in there as people that we think about and are concerned about when we make decisions about closing schools. So it frankly matches is, matches our practice.
Great. And I see Shondor's hair, hand.
Um, being a staff at a school, I care about staff, but uh, and, and I didn't see it making some sense, but I generally feel unless there's a very compelling reason, we shouldn't vary from the MASC reference versions of these policies because it makes it much harder in the future to manage changes to the policy once uh, we've diverted from the sample policy. So unless it's a substantive change that uh, actually matters uh, in terms of the implementation of the policy, I'm, I oppose changing language um, from the reference uh, policies.
I think this is something that we discussed in the last meeting as well.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly enough about it to make a fuss about it, so.
Understood, Scott, thanks. Jackie?
My Zoom updated and I have no idea how to use the new raise hand feature, so, sorry. Um, yeah, I, I, I do think oh, I'm freezing up, okay. I know that we had this conversation during our last meeting and I, so I guess I just want to say as a point of um, clarification for any of these policies in the conversations that we're having is that I think to Scott's point, like we do care about all staff and all students and to reiterate what Shondor is saying is that when we make these changes, to be able to continuously track and monitor and make it easier for future policy subcommittee and school committee members to make sure that we're staying on top of these um, is to maybe avoid these types of comments in this space. And then if we choose to not to reflect a lot of changes to the policies as we're going forward, that we're still recognizing that these are things that people care about and that we want to mention, but we may not necessarily deviate or change from MASC recommendations.
Hmm, okay, understood. All right, and Scott said that it's perhaps not so significant that he would make a fuss over it. So maybe Amy, we just make note of it and now we can move on. Um, any other policies that anybody wanted to bring up? I think I see Robin's hand.
Just a quick, quick question. So we've changed a policy, um, EEAA um, transportation to walkers and riders. Just out of curiosity, just because what is outlined here, I mean, the one thing that jumped off the page to me is grade seven through twelve. If you live more than two miles from the school, you can receive bus transportation. I just wasn't sure, are we really making seventh through twelfth grade walk to school two miles? Cause that's, that seems a lot. I just wasn't sure if that's, is, do we adhere to that policy or do we pick students up? Like I, I wasn't sure.
Do you have, or maybe even you could defer to Ross, I'm not sure.
Ask Mr. Mr. Mulcaren if he might uh, be able to address this question.
Uh, no, so we do not require grade seven through twelve to walk, nor do we have a two-mile policy. Um, we have to be, I think cautious with anything we put in place with regards to transportation or regional school districts as it, as it could impact our um, transportation reimbursement as a regional from the state. This policy being in place or any language in, in there does not prevent us from going above and beyond the policy. Um, we have very few walkers. I mean, the locations of all of our schools are on busy roads. They're not residentially set. So no, the, the, that policy is not necessarily enacted upon. Um, I would caution also against changing policy to match practice because to the point earlier, it becomes harder to unpack future iterations of policy. Um, but I think we're in a fine position with our, what our practice is relative to what policy may be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful. And also it does say that exceptions to these guidelines can be made at the discretion of the superintendent.
Correct.
Great. Any other policies anybody wants to bring forward?
Madam Chair?
Please.
I just want to comment that that's also the standard practice across uh, the Commonwealth. And I think it, because it reflects the guidance and national law.
Right, oh, right, yep. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
So, the, so mine, I have two more policies and the concern is similar for both of them. Um, it's specifically E, C is in Charlie, A, F is in Frank. That's the first one.
Yep.
And now just, and I'll, I'll tell you, the next one is GBJ, GB is in Boyd, J is in Jack. Um, so on ECAF, you know, we, there's a red line change regarding access to videos. It says as the situation arises. I, I believe that that's too liberal. I don't know if we have more stringent requirements, but you know, if you look, if I, I asked Bing, said, you know, what is a corporate policy for video um, requirements? And you know, its response said something along the lines of, you should only provide this material to law enforcement um, upon written request and when a valid legal basis is provided, so a warrant, subpoena or a court order. And so I wonder, you know, should we be having more liberal access to our videos than what a just, you know, corporate stringent policy might look like?
So Kirk, please feel free.
I um, hear Mr. Powell's concern. Perhaps uh, this is one of those policies that we pull out of the bunch um, so that we can get some legal guidance on that.
I would appreciate that.
Um, all right, so Amy, why don't you make note of that? And then uh, the next go around, this will not be in the consent agenda.
Quite a clarification.
Yeah.
So is that ECAF and GBJ? Because Scott, you were saying
Slightly different on GBJ.
Okay.
So GBJ number six talks about providing names and home addresses only to government agencies as required for official reports or by law. I, I wonder what it means to provide for official reports rather than just by law.
Can you um, just for my purposes, Scott, so we're in GBJ and what number are you talking about?
Number six.
Got it. And so this, um, Amy, is this an ad? Because I do see that it's underlined, but it's not read. Is this brand new language inserted?
It is.
Okie dokie. So Scott, can you ask your question one more time?
Yeah, I'm concerned that rather than just providing information as required by law, we're also doing it for official reports. And I'm wondering what it means to provide them for official reports and you know, what kind of privacy concerns might be involved there.
Uh, Kirk, do you have any idea what this might be referencing, these official reports?
Yeah, uh, we, we are obligated to provide um, certain documents to, uh, as required by law. But again, I will uh, get a legal, legal reference on that for you.
Thank you.
So Amy Vessels, maybe you can again, mark this one to come out of the bunch for the second reading. Cause we're probably going to have to do another, we're going to have to add it to a later first reading.
And um, I, I'm going to kindly ask Ms. Masterson if she can add this to our cabinet agenda for Monday.
Both of those, Kirk?
Yeah, both of those.
Okay, great, thanks Scott. Anything else, anyone? All right, so it doesn't seem like there's any other concerns with any of the other items. So Amy, thank you for that first reading on this handful. These will appear in the consent agenda for a second reading at the next meeting. And Amy, did you want to tell the committee what they can expect from policy at the next in-person meeting?
Yes, so at the next in-person meeting, we're not adding new ones because we're meeting the day after that on the seventh for our next uh, policy subcommittee meeting. And so we'll need to go through a whole ru- round of, you know, other policies and chat about stuff before we so the, the second meeting in November, we'll have another round of stuff um, for the committee.
All right, so everybody has a little bit of a respite there, except for policy subcommittee. Thank you guys for doing that enormous amount of work. We continue to appreciate everything you all are doing. So we're going to move the agenda now to the next item, which is the finance and operations report. And I know that this is Ross's domain, but maybe Kirk, you want to queue it up a little bit?
Oh, I thought you were just going to run with it, Madam Chair. I'll be happy. Uh, as now we are getting into some expenditures and things, we're going to be uh, putting into play one of our monthly um, uh, events here for those of us that are newer to the committee. Uh, so Mr. Mulcaren, our, our director of finance and operations, would please lead the way.
Yes, thank you Superintendent Downing and thanks to the school committee uh, for the opportunity to present the two important reports are, that are within the meeting materials. Uh, both of the, these reports were reviewed with the budget warrant subcommittee at their previous meetings. So first, the FY twenty-four end of year operating budget report. Uh, this is the time of year that we share with the school committee, how our operating budget um, landed in the previous fiscal year, which ends on June thirtieth. Um, this report highlights how each of our cost centers closed and is part of a bigger fiscal picture that we will continue to present next month and we'll review the FY twenty-four revenue and the excess deficiency balance sheet that will be submitted to the Department of Revenue. Um, the FY twenty-three end of year closing information is provided at the bottom of this report, highlighted in blue for your year-to-year reference. Uh, beginning with the end in mind, our closing balance for FY twenty-four was positive at one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, twenty-four dollars. The majority of the surplus came in the form of salary differentials as evidenced in school cost centers. And as we've discussed throughout the FY twenty-four monthly operation reports at school committee. I want to call your attention to some highlights of the other cost centers. Uh, technology, health services, uh, curriculum, professional development, which is our teaching and learning budget. Uh, and the athletics budget ended uh, near budget with minimal surplus. The surplus is within insurance and benefits, system-wide and facilities are due to a number of factors. In brief, we saw lower expenditures on unemployment insurance, our operational insurance, lower assessments on school choice and charter school, as well as a milder winter impacting utilities. Uh, as the deficit in substitute teachers presents, we are expecting to do a deeper, uh, deeper analysis of the substitute cost center during this budget season as the complexities of substitute challenges during the pandemic may have impacted forecasting for FY twenty-four. And as a reminder, this line also covers the costs of long-term substitutes. Lastly, I want to provide a brief overview of the status of the special education cost center at the end of FY twenty-four. As the committee is aware uh, from the discussion during the FY twenty-five budget development and our discussions in general, special education services have faced significant increases in cost as we also recognize that students uh, are presenting with higher levels of need in their programming. We support the special education cost through three major sources. The operational budget, grants and the circuit breaker program, which is provided by the state to reimburse districts for a portion of higher uh, cost educational programs. As the footnote details, in order to close the special education cost center without a deficit, we had to offset with an additional six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. So by applying this additional offset, our overall FY twenty-four budget close is healthy. I will present our FY twenty-four revenues at the next meeting, coupled with what we ultimately submit to the Department of Revenue for the expected certified level of our excess and deficiency fund. I can take questions now, uh, Madam Chair on the FY twenty-four end of year report.
Great. Are there any um, questions? I guess I have one really quickly. Um, my initial thought, Ross, was that it looked like I know you haven't certified the E and D, which is basically like the money we had left over at the end. And so anybody who's new here, um, basically at the end of the fiscal year, we, it looks like we did not spend all of the money that was given to us by the three towns. And so what we do with that money is it get, it gets pushed over into our excess and deficiency fund. And that almost acts as like, n- nobody likes to call it this, but it's basically a rainy day fund where we have this little bit of a cushion in this bank account that we inevitably always need for various reasons, but we try to keep it at a healthy level for the just-in-case days. So I know that you haven't gotten that certified yet, Ross, as you just said, but it looks like we are looking to put about one point one million back in.
Yeah, that's correct. And if I could just add um, to your, your, well, while complex, that was a, I think sufficient brief on excess and deficiency. Um, and I would associate it closer to a municipality or a town's uh, free cash rather than necessarily a rainy day fund. Any expenditure or appropriation of the excess and deficiency fund would have to come to this committee. And as practiced, this administration only does that one time a year through the budget. And we had a great discussion last year in preparation for FY twenty-five about excess and deficiency. So yes, the surplus from the operating budget, any excess in revenue that we would have um, from FY twenty-four, which I'll present next month, would be coupled together to be added to the balance of our, our excess and deficiency fund um, to make essentially a new submission to the Department of Revenue for certification in, in partnership with our auditors who, just as a footnote on that process, our new auditing firm is, is been excellent and has made some great suggestions um, already in working with us and, and unpacking practices and things like that. So they're, they're, they're really helpful. But we're, we're expecting that all to be done on time and I'll have an update at the end of next month.
Fantastic. Any other questions from the committee? Ross, is this something that budget and warrant went over?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, Budget and Warrant for that. And so I'm not seeing any other questions. We're going to move on.
Great, so the FY twenty-five, um, we're, we're living in, in actually three uh, budgets right now. We, we're, we're finalizing our FY twenty-four pieces. We are living our FY twenty-five and we're beginning our thinking and planning of our FY twenty-six. Uh, so relative to the current budget, um, as we open our fiscal year in July one, uh, September operating report details budget levels expended and covered as well as uh, projected. While it is very early in the school year, uh, I've provided a basic level of forecasting, uh, which for newcomers within the yellow portion uh, of the sheet, um, the more predictable area to forecast is within salaries as vacancies from one year to the next have been filled. The majority of surplus that we see as of today are due to those salary differentials. Um, as I've provided uh, with the footnotes, facilities, substitutes, special education, athletic budgets are just too early in uh, this phase of the year to make special education, athletic budgets are just too early in, uh, this phase of the year to make predictions. Please expect, uh, projected expenditures and balances when we present the October operating be bud- uh, report next month and beyond, um, as we have more data to draw upon. And again, while it is October twenty-third, please note that this report is September, so it's as of nine thirty, not necessarily as of this evening.
Alright. Thanks for that, Ross. Are, um, there any questions from the committee on that second report? Alright, not seeing any. I'm gonna thank, uh, Ross for his very succinct and informative presentations. Thank you, Ross.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
As always, we appreciate it. Um, so we're gonna move the agenda, everyone, to the next item, which is a matter of unfinished business. Kind of bringing full circle, something that started last year with the presentation of the Equity Audit, which happened in June. Um, we are welcoming today our Dear J group. And I think that we might have a few friends here, Kelly Lawler and Kathy. Did I say that right, Kathy? Kathy Beckles is here, um, to present to us tonight. And I'd also like to welcome our Dear J liaison on the School Committee, Jackie Reiner, to perhaps say just a couple of words to introduce these presenters as they give us, uh, their insights on the Equity Audit. So Jackie, over to you.
Thank you. I have really poor internet. I'm getting, um, uh, Amy Cohen's poor quality. Um, so if I glitch out, please step in for me, um, Leah. But I am very pleased to introduce two members of DRJ and our Advisory Committee, um, who also, along with many other members of the committee, um, got together really digging into the work last year. Uh, and we wanted to give space and an opportunity for our Equity Audit Working Group to give us kind of a deeper dive into the Equity Audit recommendations that were provided by Dr. Meg Mayo Brown. And then also to really like, I think, speak to us directly about what are the priorities that we want to really highlight, um, as we move into this upcoming year. So we have two representatives, um, from DRJ and from that specific, uh, working group, so Kelly Lawler and Kathy, uh, Beckles. So I'm gonna press pause and turn off my camera so I can still hear you all.
Hi, uh, thank you very much, Jackie. Um, and thank you to everyone for having us. Uh, I am Kelly Lawler and I've been serving on DRJ for a few years now. Um, I've been an educator in another district for fifteen years and I've been living in Stowe with my husband and my two kids for about ten years. So two kids enrolled, um, at Center School. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Superintendent Downey, um, a leader for organizing everything, um, and sending us the Zoom link, um, and all of the School Committee representatives here tonight. Um, we are so pleased that the School Committee, um, took on this as a budget item in June of twenty twenty-four. Um, and that Dr. Um, May- Meg Mayo Brown was able to present, uh, her final findings. Um, and so that's really what we're referencing. So, um, everyone should have access to all of those materials. And I'm just gonna kind of go over a brief introduction of DRJ and what we do, but we're happy to be here. So again, thank you. Uh, so the Diversity Equity Awareness and Racial Justice Advisory, um, we're an advisory to the School Committee. So we met with our liaison, um, we meet monthly and, um, we heard what the School Committee needs, needs from us, and that's why we're here tonight. Um, but we just wanna continue to just tell you our mission. Um, we're continually here to support and educate the Nishoba Regional School Committee and the Nishoba Regional School District to ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are embedded in practices within our district for all stakeholders. That's our priority. Um, and you know, we envision a district where students of all races, ethnicities, sexual orientations, gender identities, religious affiliations, neurotypes, physical abilities, nationalities, incomes, languages, and bodies belong and can realize their unique potential as active contributors of their community. Um, so that's what DRJ does. And we were asked to kind of come up with some priorities for the School Committee, uh, for this school year, um, that came out of that, that huge seventy-page document of the final Equity Audit. Um, and so really, I want to, um, just reference pages sixty-three to seventy. Um, that's where the final recommendations were from Dr. Meg Mayo Brown. And so priority number one was for the School Committee, um, for your policies and planning. And I, I, I did just hear you guys working on that, your policies. Uh, and so what the, the final audit said is that we should consider adopting a definition of equity to provide clarity to all NRSD stakeholders. An example, what is pulled right there, there's resources that you can click on. Um, and one is from the National Equity Project. And it says that educational equity means that each tie-up child receives what they need to develop to their full academic and social potential. Working towards equity in schools involves a lot. And in, but in one of those things is ensuring equally high outcomes for all participants in our educational system, removing the predictability of success or failure that currently correlates with social or cultural factors. Um, interpreting inequitable practices, finding them, um, and addressing them, you know, as quickly as possible. Examining biases, uh, um, which I know this, the school has been working on with their professional development and learning opportunities. And creating inclusive multicultural school environments for adults and children. Uh, so that was the first priority, uh, that we really think is an easy ask, um, that the School Committee could quickly kind of come up with that definition, um, that they're, that they would use for the rest of the year. Okay? And, um, if there's any questions, I can stop or I can move on to the next priority?
I think we can keep rolling. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay. Alright, so, um, priority number two, um, was to review the MASC's policy uh, on educational equity to consider an explicit focus on educational equity, including the inclusion and equity practices within the district's strategic plan. Uh, so that's, that's something that I think the School District is doing and has, has probably done, uh, on the School Committee, um, seeing all of the policies that you were referencing from the MASC. And the third one, um, is something that DRJ actually worked, worked on and we presented in, in June, um, in our final reports. You can see that, uh, in our, on our meeting minutes and our, and our final report that was published in June, uh, is to utilize a policy equity analysis tool. And so DRJ had been talking, uh, with the School Committee and with the administration about possibly implementing, we were calling it a decision-making tool that we've seen other towns and, um, other community groups using, uh, to better ensure equitable practices. And that's exactly what Dr. Meg Mayo Brown was referencing is, and she called it an equity analysis tool. There are lots of examples, um, a few that she provided in her final report from pages sixty-three to seventy. Uh, but you know, some of it is really just, it could be considered a checklist where you measure, um, the extent to which a policy is responding to a certain topic or issue. Um, you know, so does it, is it responding well to a great extent? Is it not ri- responding not at all? And so that, that really, I think, connects what you, what we were talking about on the School Committee is that policy to practice, right? And that, and that is, is often a gap where we can struggle. So an analysis tool is one way to help us, um, ensure that we are, um, staying true to those equitable practices. And the School Committee, uh, can refer to that in, in our final report. Uh, so those were the three things, those were the three asks that Dr. Meg Mayo Brown had in her report. Um, and, and we'd like to support the School Committee in any way to, to see those three things. I think those are, are goals that, um, we are pretty easy to kind of accomplish this year. And the, we're here, DRJ, uh, meeting every month to, to help you guys out, okay? So please let us know if you'd like us to do more work on our decision-making tool. Do you want us to kind of merge, um, with some of the reference tools that we also saw from Dr. Meg Mayo Brown? Um, you let us know. So that was just kind of our intro, um, and Kathy is going to take it away. Um, but we will be here, um, to answer any questions or, um, have review anything that, that you might want to review.
Alright, thank you, Kelly. Um, so good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Kathy, like you, as you all know, and I live in Bolton. And I have two kids at Florence Sawyer. And I'm also a teacher. I work at, uh, Parker Charter in Devens. Um, so I'm in a very progressive, uh, district. Um, and, um, this work is really important to me and to us, the DRJ Committee. Um, I want to continue with what Kelly started off with. And besides those three points that she has, uh, mentioned, those three priorities, um, I'd like to speak to, uh, pages twenty-five to twenty-nine that's on the report. And it recognizes this personal disparities and growing diverse populations within student groups. So Bolton is changing, right? Our towns are changing. And, um, I think this needs some attention from the School Committee. And so the district publishes a comprehensive positive climate plan outlining, outlining leadership, training, and professional development, resources, and services, bullying prevention approaches, policies, and procedures for reporting bullying and family education resources. The plan clearly articulates a vision and expectations for safe and supportive learning environments. However, it doesn't state that funds will be used for DEI efforts like hiring a director or, um, an organization to help train faculty and staff so that they continue to do this work in school. Alright, so this is a concern. It also doesn't have a clear plan to hire, then retain a di- a diverse population of leaders and teachers. So our follow-up question is how can the School Committee prioritize these personnel decisions and policies? Okay, cuz what we're seeing and what we've noticed from the report is that we have some work to do in this area and it will require some funding to, uh, make progress. Okay? Um, another priority included in the report is to create identity-safe classrooms. And we were also wondering if the School Committee could start with making identity, identity-safe spaces, right? So instead, just right off the bat, just making an area for kids to go where they feel comfortable and welcome in the school. Um, this can be done. I'm not, I'm hopeful it can be done. DRJ also appreciated the recommendations to provide a positive school climate by using a PBIS or cultural, culturally responsive practice to systematically enhance equity in school discipline. But DRJ had questions about policies to respond to overt incidents of hate and racism or policies to respond to the use of racial exclusives used within schools. We recommend that the School Committee work with the administration to create and improve policies regarding incidents of hate and how to respond to reports of racial exclusives being used within our schools. Okay, um, this is heavy work, but it is, it is must-do work. And DRJ would like to support in any way we can to make this, to change this culture. Okay? Um, in addition, DRJ would like the School Committee to commit to a timeline for when they can complete the first three priorities listed on page sixty-five. And we sincerely do thank you for the work you have done in the past, right? Thank you for that. Um, but we'd like to continue to do good work. And so we're asking that we make these things a priority and let us know how we can assist in these efforts. Um, on page sixty-five of the report, um, the National School Ball, School Board Association recognizes the critical role school committees have in accomplishing equitable outcomes for all students. School committees establish system-wide goals, adopt policies and budgets, as well as review and provide feedback on school improvement plans, school handbooks, and curriculum. Through each of these areas, school committees are uniquely positioned to affirm their commitment to equitable outcomes and to take specific actions to ensure each child thrives in the district's schools. And we are confident that NRSD will continue committing to this very important work. We are. Um, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have about what was just presented to you.
Thanks so much for that. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Kirk first, perhaps, since hand up.
Yeah, I want to thank our team, our DRJ team for coming tonight. You guys are, are doing some awesome work, so thank you very much. Just, uh, to bring a, round out some of the things that are going on based on those recommendations and, uh, to remind the committee, uh, the work that we've done to hire Dr. Kalise Warnham, who is the professional that's been training the district leadership team and our district-wide equity team.
Doctor Kirk, sorry for interrupting you, Mr. Downey. Did you hear that she is pres- she's gonna be the keynote speaker at the Metco Directors Conference? That's happening in, in, in just a month, really. Um, so I just need to say that. She's amazing. Thank you for working with her. I'm excited to hear her at the Metco, um, conference coming up.
Yeah, Dr. Warnham is tremendous. And, uh, Ms. Lawler, you're gonna be excited to hear that we have contracted with her once again to do another round of professional development. We're expanding that professional development bu- beyond our committee. She came and delivered the, uh, commencement address to our educators this year and the feedback that we received from that was outstanding. So as we have fifty thousand dollars in our professional development budget dedicated to equity, professional development, trainings, um, those types of things in our budget. These, this is the way that we're using those funds. And so that connects to frankly, the first recommendation because we have two more sessions left with Dr. Warnham, I believe. And, uh, the outcome of that is our team is gonna have our definition of equity rounded out to take to our building-based teams and we'll be bringing forward, um, uh, that language to this committee, uh, after the first of the year, our last session, I believe, is in December. So we should have that. We're gonna be bringing that forward. So that is gonna be happening this year. Um, and, uh, so as we look at those things, we also are participating, um, in some human resources work. Our new, um, Director of Human Resources and I will be going to Regis College, uh, on November first, I believe it is, uh, which is around, uh, how to diversify your workforce. And so we'll be attending that, uh, uh, to try to come back with some, some, uh, strategies on how we can move that work forward. Um, and then I know that our principals are also, as I'm sitting down with them one-on-one and doing their goals, uh, I have required them to, uh, base their, their professional practice goals in the bucket of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And as such, I know they have school improvement goals towards that and you'll be learning more about that when they present school improvement plans next week. So the recommendations that I'm hearing, I think, are in line with the practices we have planned and we look forward to, um, uh, doing the work with our folks.
Thanks for that, Kirk. I do see a couple of hands up before we go forward. Um, Kathy and Kelly, did you guys have, um, all of this collected in maybe a Google Doc or a place where we can kind of keep it memorialized in the meeting materials?
Yes, yes. I will email that to Alita. We just wanted all of our mem- this was, we did this in a working group discussion, uh, last night. So we just wanted to bring it to our big group, um, so that we can make a motion to vote on it. And then Alita will be able to share that out and post that.
Okay, great. So when, so Kelly, when does the bigger group meet?
No, in November.
November.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, um.
Yeah, it's November twelfth, I believe, on Tuesday. It's the first in-person meeting.
And just for the, for the committee's, um, benefit, I think that one of the things that we all wrestle with is timelines. And so DRJ was kind of working really hard to get this information to us at the deadline that we kind of established, which is this meeting. And so Kelly, you're saying that you want to bring all of what you just presented to us to that bigger committee so that you can kind of formalize it with all of DRJ? And then it will kind of become part of the record?
Yes.
Got it. I really appreciate you guys doing this tonight. Thank you so much.
And we're very happy to be here. Um, we're happy to meet the deadline and to continue to do this work. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, because you've given us a lot to think about that is kind of beyond perhaps what the committee talked about at the workshop, but it's really good stuff and I don't want to lose it. Um, so whenever you guys can, just let us know. And when you send it to Alita, can you also alert me that it's?
It's been sent.
Yeah, so that I can kind of talk with Jackie about it and make sure that I'm, I'm interfacing with Kirk about it as well.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will.
Thank you.
Leah, I would, I have a few, um, as I was kind of listening and taking in a lot of this information, like I know that there are existing documents that I want to maybe bundle and share back with DRJ at that meeting. I know that we talked pretty extensively last year. Assistant Superintendent Friend had talked about the teacher recruitment plan, so like giving them, um, and like- Assistant Superintendent Friend had talked about the teacher recruitment plan, so like giving them and like referencing previously developed materials, I think that outline those steps that the district is taking and with support from the school committee. So on the backend, I'll send those to, to you and to DRJ.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jackie. So I see Shondor's hand next, perhaps.
I, I want to echo the thanks. Obviously, there's a lot of work and it's really important. I'm wondering if we could add this back to a future agenda without the written report. I'm sort of struggling. There was so much information to, to respond to it.
Yeah, for sure. I know, I'm trying to think what the best way is to Shondor, so let me think on that a little bit. And I can also just chat with Jackie to kind of consider how we can kind of parse this all out. I think that's what you want to do, right?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So we'll, we'll chat about that and definitely, this is an ongoing conversation. So, yes, we'll put it on a future agenda.
Thank you.
Amy Cohen.
Uh, thank you. And thanks for the depth of the kind of thought that went into the presentation that you just gave us and the, the food for thought. I have kind of following up on what Shandor just said and what Leah is going to ponder. I'm wondering if what would be most helpful for us is for whatever gets shared out with the school committee, if you could kind of frame them in terms of recommendations. I mean, I heard that, I heard kind of that throughout the presentation you gave tonight, but it was hard to, there was a lot to unpack within there. So if you could just kind of summarize it in, in that way, I think it would help us kind of understand what action items we could take or how to move forward from your recommendations. One of the things that you kept pointing back to is page sixty-five of the Equity Audit. And I was able to find it and I put it in the chat for others, the report that you were referring to. And I, I, it occurred, it occurred to me that after Superintendent gave his answer that I want to make sure that we are capturing the work that is underway in the goals that we've set for ourselves. So what am I trying to say here? Like Superintendent Downing, I heard that a lot of what they are recommending that we consider is already underway, but when I look at the goals that we just, that were put forward, I don't know that it's explicitly captured. And so I think maybe that's part of what we could do when we get more information from DRJ is see how we can capture it in a way that's someone outside this organization would understand what we're doing. Like the definition of equity, sounds like it's happening and it will be presented to us, but it's not listed as a goal anywhere for the school committee or the superintendent, I don't think.
Yeah, I have to respond to that, Ms. Cohen, is that we don't lay out everything in terms of goals. Those are the activities we get to, to what the overarching goals are. So yes, that, that is an element that we'll be reaching to as one of the priorities that are listed within that plan. Back to the superintendent goals, which were voted on tonight in the consent agenda, that the goal I wrote around disproportionality in terms of access to high-quality education is deeply embedded in equity for our students. So the action steps and activities around that are toward equity. I would also connect us back to the adoption of the high-quality instructional materials also are produced with an examination through an equity lens, and they're aligned to the district equity guidance, DESI equity guidance as, as well as the equity look-for walkthrough tools that we use on our building walks with our principals that we participated in in a couple of locations this week. So these are all activities that happen within the goals of the strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just have one more question, Leah, if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, so one of like, for me, one of the low-hanging fruit items that's on page sixty-five that I think you guys were pointing to was reviewing Policy JBB. And I feel like it's really bad timing to bring up another policy, given all the policies that are on the plate for our policy subcommittee. But.
It's on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it is. Oh, okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
What's the title of JBB? Can you remind me? I don't have the Equity Audit open.
And that seems like something that is definitely related to our purview and, and would just be, like I said, like a low-hanging fruit item for the school committee.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great reminder, Amy. And I think the one thing that I would like to point out for the public, but also for our newest school committee members, they are going to be engaging in orientation over the next week or so. And in that orientation what is chief among the things you will learn is understanding what school committees are empowered to do and what becomes operational and it is within the realm of the superintendent. So at one point, I heard one of the recommendations to create a room or a space in the schools where students can feel safe, they can feel like they belong, and it's a place where they can kind of go if they need to. So whereas the school committee doesn't have the power to create such a thing, what I did hear Kathy said, say at one point is that we will fund or approve the funding for such resources. And so the budget is within our purview. So what I would like to do, once I get the report from DRJ, is not only talk with Jackie about it, but also interface with Kirk so that we can make sure that all of the operational things that are being done are kind of addressing the recommendations that DRJ is making. We might not have any control over how that shakes out or how it moves down the pipeline. But to kind of report back in a very organized way, these are the things that the school committee can kind of take on, take head-on, like Policy JBB. Or these are the things that Kirk has inside the strategic plan or even outside of the strategic plan because, you know, some of these things are new from the report. So we can report back, like Shondor said, at a later meeting to kind of parse those things out, make sure that nothing is falling through the cracks, so to speak. Go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll just pull up two examples of where the committee has done that already, is in the last two budget seasons. Two budgets ago, two cycles ago, I should say, approved our recommendation of fifty thousand dollars to conduct an equity audit, and we looked for additional grant fundings to do that. And then this past year, you also approved the professional development budget where we had earmarked an additional fifty thousand dollars for professional development of our faculty and staff moving forward. So those are two examples that support what you're talking about.
Excellent. Thanks, Kirk. All right, is there any other committee member who would like to weigh in or ask a question, make a comment?
I would, if I could.
Please, Jackie.
I think that what is exciting, hearing what the priorities are and the, and the recommendations from DRJ is and then seeing it, like knowing everything that we know in this journey is what is very clear to me is how we need to be more clear and transparent about what's happening, because I think a lot of the priorities and the recommendations are happening. It's how, how are they happening? And then being able to communicate that to our communities, to our educators, to our staff, and to our students. A good case in point is that DRJ has, across many years, done a deep dive into what would be an equity decision-making tool. They have two recommendations that they gave to, you know, in conversation in twenty twenty-three. We have some new ones, but part of the ask and part of the goals that we set for ourselves is really like, how are we actively using and implementing those tools and looking for feedback and guidance from DRJ advisory members around how we're implementing that into our work? That's a goal that we set for this year. So I just want to point out, like, I do feel like it's really important that we are as clear as possible that how this work is being done, whether it be at the school committee level, at the operational level, at the building level, because it is happening.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jackie. All right, well, I'm not seeing any other hands.
Could I ask a question?
Oh, please do, John, yeah.
And I'm, I'm totally new here, so I apologize for my ignorance. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I heard, if I heard correctly, Superintendent had said that equity was already deeply embedded in in the way we did things. So it sounds like it's, it might already be present. And so I was just curious, if we're needing to define equity, where is it getting defined? Is there? I guess it's just, where is it getting defined? And is this gonna be replacing, expanding, or a new policy?
Good question. I'll leave it to Kirk.
I'll be happy to answer that. Yes, the definition from the National Equity Project is the place that we're going to begin from as we do this. And that's the work that we're doing at our district-wide committee that I'll be bringing forth to this team. To say that equity is something that's embedded in, we've done that, we've just begun this journey. We're on a long way to understanding those practices. And as we look at, and I, and I recognize, Mr. McFarland, you are brand-new today. So you didn't have the benefit of seeing my presentation on my goals previously. But issues like disproportionality of access to, to high-level classes is an example of one. So we know we have work to do over time to ensure that any student that comes in our school system has every opportunity to be able to experience the rigor and the sense of belonging that we want each and every individual to have in the school system. So this is something that we will always be working on. I don't think it's a, we've reached the moment or we've completed it. We just continue to be self-reflective and look at our work as we come along, take feedback from our community and our constituents, and make appropriate adjustments along the way.
Great. Thanks, Kirk. John, I hope that gives you some more insight on this this whole thing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we'll keep going.
That's the way to do it. Just keep going. All right, everybody. So I think that that might be the last question around our DRJ presentation. I would like to, one more time, thank Kelly and Kathy for coming here. I am so appreciative of all your hard work. Like Jackie said, there's a ton of behind-the-scenes stuff that you guys are doing constantly. And your work needs to be completely celebrated and appreciated, and we thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you again.
Thanks for having us, really.
Yeah. And you know, just before you guys jump off, I pulled up the planning calendar, and I'm wondering if I were to put it on the November sixth agenda. It looks, it doesn't stay this way, but that agenda seems to me to go be, have some space. Would you guys be okay with us kind of, you don't necessarily need to reappear at the meeting, but do you think that we would be ready to kind of bring the documentation to the fore on the sixth of November?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. So for the committee, I put that in the planning calendar so that we can kind of revisit this at a later date. That will also give Kirk and me a Wednesday to discuss. Kirk?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll also remind you, November sixth is the date that myself, Mr. Moore-Carron and Attorney Gleason will be at the MS, MASC, MAS joint conference. So the three of us will be attending remotely via use of the owl, which is why we intentionally kept that date somewhat light. So I just wanted to throw that reminder out there.
Okay, that's great. But you'll still be present so at, in some way. So that'll, that'll be great. All right, everybody. Thank, thank you so much, guys, for being here. We really appreciate your time and your energy. Thanks. All right, guys, so we're gonna move the agenda to the next item here. And that is subcommittee or advisory reports. I wonder if there are any chair people who feel there's something we have not yet discussed that they would like to bring forward? Yeah, Amy.
Yeah, I just think we need to add the school committee final, final revised, revised version of the manual to the meeting materials.
This is a, a communication subcommittee request?
Yeah, we, Sharon and I spent more time formatting and editing to add a table of contents to the document. And we feel that it is now ready.
And in the last time that we discussed this, we moved to approve it pending those short edits that you made, right?
That's my recollection.
And so there's no need for the committee to act. You just want to perhaps put the edited version somewhere?
In the meeting materials, perhaps.
For this, for which meeting?
For the next meeting? I, I don't know. Do, do we need to, I just felt like there were needed to, we needed to close the loop with it.
Yeah. Anybody want, so we have a couple of choices, options here. We can put it in the meeting materials from the previous meeting where we moved and approved it. Or we can bring it back to the floor just for a final, final looksee without any need to vote upon it.
It could be in a consent agenda item, just to.
Yeah, although we already approved it, so I don't think we actually need to.
All we need to do is post it.
Yes.
To the website? Is that all we're, okay. So our work is done, that is ready to be posted. That's all we need.
All right, so I will, I think you forwarded that to Alita. Just me? So could you send that to Alita? And Alita, could you replace the manual that currently sits on our webpage with the new version that Amy sends to you? Thank you. And then we can direct the school committee to view it, and the public for that matter, at their leisure.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Communication Subcommittee. Any other subcommittee or advisory reports of note? Seeing none, guys. We're gonna move on to items for next agenda. So I'm looking at the planning calendar here. I am gonna try to share my screen. So that's today. Our next meeting is the one that Kirk just referenced, where he is going to be at the joint conference with Joe. And who else did you say is going, Kirk? Is it Laura?
It's myself, Attorney Gleason, and Mr. Moore-Carron.
Oh, okay, very good. So guys, you can see what's on the agenda for the next meeting. Anybody want to add anything right now? Amy? I think you're muted, Amy.
I just have a clarifying question about the school improvement plans.
Yeah.
Will those be presented on the sixth and then voted on the twentieth? Is that how that's?
Kirk, is that the plan? Yes, he says.
Approve all SIPS on the twentieth. I see that. Thank you.
Oh, there we go, yep. So normally, Kirk, do we do all three levels of school improvement plans? I'm sorry, I'm blanking.
Yes, we do, because we know that we're required to do that by national law for the high school, but we developed the practice of bringing all the plans to the committee three years ago. So we will bring all the plans.
Okay, very good. All right, guys, so that is what is on the agenda for next time. I'm gonna stop sharing and just remind everybody that if there, if anything pops into your head that you would like added to the agenda, please shoot me an email, and I can discuss with Kirk. And most likely just put it on the agenda for you. If not the next one, then one soon thereafter. All right, so if there's nothing else, fair warning. I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, Jackie. Thank you. We're gonna take a vote, so I will go around the room. I will vote first. I say yes. John? You just have to unmute.
We're voting on ending, is that what it is?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yep, this is our favorite part of the night. Come on. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
And Robin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes, although you're four minutes over.
Sorry. Jackie?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Very good, everybody. We are adjourned. Thanks for a great meeting.